Alrighty, I would like to call to order the February 13th Planning Board Meeting. And I will start with the first item on the agenda, which is roll call now start to my left.
Riley Bergeron.
Ryan Smith.
Paul Jacques.
Stacy LeBlanc.
David Trask.
Tim DeRoche.
Amanda Garrett.
Okay, since we are missing a full member in Darren, I will elevate Amanda to a full member with voting privileges today. Alright, so this is gonna be my favorite part of the night. I will hand it over to staff because we have board member recognition.
Thank you Chair LeBlanc. Today, we wanted to take a minute to thank Evan Seer for his dedication, expertise, and unwavering commitment to our community.
Oh, it's on, and I shut it off when I pressed the button. Sorry, thank you. We'd like to thank Evan Seer today for his dedication, expertise, and unwavering commitment to our community. For 12 years, Evan has served with distinction on the Auburn Planning Board, four of which he dedicated as chairman of the board. Evan's tenure on the board has been characterized by integrity, diligence, and a steadfast pursuit of positive improvements in the community. His leadership has guided us through periods of growth and transformation, ensuring that development initiatives align with our values, aspirations, and long-term goals. Under Evan's guidance, the Planning Board has navigated complex challenges while always prioritizing the well-being of residents and the sustainability of our environment. As chairman, his ability to facilitate constructive dialogue while always paying attention to details was instrumental in advancing our comprehensive plan and achieving meaningful outcomes for our community. Whether presiding over meetings, mediating differing viewpoints, or advocating for innovative solutions, Evan has consistently demonstrated a remarkable ability to find solutions and respond to change over that time. Please join me in extending congratulations and appreciation to Evan Seer for his outstanding service on the Auburn Planning Board and in our community. And thank you Evan for everything you've done and continue to do for the City of Auburn.
Speech, speech, speech!
I'll just say that it truly has been an honor to serve my community for the last 12 years. I'd be lying if I said I enjoyed every moment of it, but every moment of it was certainly meaningful to me. Thank you very much.
Well, I for one can speak on behalf of myself only and say first and foremost, the Planning Board is not a political body. It definitely felt like Evan's removal felt political in nature, and that's unfortunate. We lost an incredible member of the Planning Board, and it was a pleasure serving with you. Alrighty, so the next item on the agenda is a City Manager CIP overview.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Planning Board members, thanks for having us, even though it's by ordinance, so you had to let me in, so I appreciate that. By ordinance, prior to us submitting the capital improvement budget for the City Council, this has come before the Planning Board. So for those new Planning Board members, welcome, and every year you'll have somebody from city management that will come and just kind of go over a few of the highlights of the capital improvement plan. Thank you Catherine, it should be right on the desktop. What we'll do is we'll walk through with me is Dan Goyette. Dan is our, within our engineering department, director of that group and has been with the city for many years in different capacities, but a big focus has been on some of our capital infrastructure improvement projects. Probably about, if you were to go back in time 50, 60 years ago, the city was in the same place that we're in today, and that is a great deal of infrastructure improvements. If you take a look at the fire engine houses, if you take a look at the police station, Public Works Building, maybe a little older, you know, we just went through new high school. But if you start, if you take a look at all that infrastructure, I had asked Dan to go through and do the research on when were these buildings first opened, and we're at that 50, 60-year mark on the majority of them. A few of them are a little older than that, but they are all needing repair and replacement. And so that's where we find ourselves now. So currently in the process is Engine 2, which is in New Auburn on South Main Street. That project is underway. We are working through the different phases of securing, but we have our architect and we are also working through the contract manager that will be working that project. But there's a lot underway currently with the old Engine 2 station. That building will be removed and a new one built. As many of you know, the referendum passed for the public safety building, that project will be on Minut Avenue, will replace Central Fire Station that's currently there, will be a new police and fire station. And so we're working through that. There was a recent Mayor's Ad Hoc Committee that was formed to work with staff on that process, which is started and kicked off actually yesterday. So that initiative is underway. Then the other big, large pieces within this CIP plan is our road infrastructure. And I know that's an area that, for a Planning Board, that's very important as you do your work, how are our roads, how are they, how are we doing with connectivity, and then also regarding walkability. And so you'll see through this plan, there are numerous items in there that are focusing on that. A dollar doesn't go as far as it used to, and so when we are still budgeting similar dollar amounts in some of our road replacements, we're not getting as much done as we had in the past. Dan does his best to seek out additional funding that we try to match, so you're gonna see some MDOT match dollars that are in there. That's because we're working through some initiatives to get a large, more for our dollars. One thing that I'll talk about within Dan's under engineering is probably Merrill Road. That's a road that I'm sure you've either experienced because you've driven on it, or you may have had others talk about it, especially if there's a project going on in that area. Dan's estimated the, really the rebuild of that road to be about $3 million. And so that's in the plan. This is all part of the plan. This plan has to be submitted to the council. You know, in that first year FY '25, you're gonna see the plans coming in at around 20, well, what's not in there is about a million dollars from the school for FY '25, so you're seeing about $25 million. That's not what will be presented under the City Manager CIP request. We will be working that number down quite a bit. We'll probably, you know, give any guest estimates, but it's gonna be somewhere's around that 10 to probably 14 million, somewhere's in there, based on what our recommendations will be. And then it'll be up to the council to make further reductions or to approve what's presented. So we'll be working that through. I think Dan has a few highlights that we want to hit, and then I have a few that I want to make sure I'm covering as well, but Dan, if you want to start with the engineering component.
Yep, so I can just give you a quick rundown of what each of these items entails, and if there's any specific questions with regards to projects or construction methods, you can let me know. Whitman Spring is called out specifically on this, that's a cold mulch job. It's basically, we're gonna grind up existing pavement and cold mulch and patch and whatever's there, and it's a cold mulch, so it's not your hot mix asphalt. It's a less expensive asphalt product that's gonna be laid down with a paver, just like it was if it was hot mix, but it's lost, it's a lot less expensive. That road doesn't see the type of traffic where it warrants a hot mix, but it's better than a dirt road. So you'll see that. Merrill Road, Phil already mentioned. The reconstruction, what reconstruction means is it's a full box cut, which means we remove the pavement, remove the gravel, we, it's usually underground drainage systems, sidewalks if they're there, sidewalks if they're warranted and not there, that type of work. Most of the time, that's an in-town road, things like Second Street, Third Street, Summer Street in town, that sort of thing. Reclamation is more of our rural roads, where we go through with a reclamer, the road is ground up, no material is added or taken out, and then it's just paved over the top of that. Major drainage account, that's stormwater improvements. We have done, we did an audit two years ago. We continue to do audits where we send cameras up existing stormwater systems, the major carrying systems of the city, determine what needs to be repaired and what's in good shape so that we can make those repairs before we have catastrophic failure, which we saw this summer with all the heavy rains. We try to avoid those, obviously. MDOT match, that's an account where we match both state and federal dollars. The state has an MPI program which the city uses as much as we can. They've upped the total to a $750,000 50/50 match, so they'll give us 750 if we spend 750, but that's only eligible on state roads, so no local roads are eligible for that money. So we have to be, we have to think ahead on where we're gonna use that, those funds so that we can maximize the dollars without having to spend city resources to repair roads. Those are things like Mount Auburn Avenue was paid for with MPI funds, like Main Mill and Broad, that intersection in front of Raleigh's, all that work, that was done with a, an LPA program, which is Local Project Administration, that was a 10% match. So the state and federal dollars provided 90% of the money and the city provided 10%. So those are those dollars that we use to match those different types of programs. Resurfacing is exactly what it sounds like, that's just running a paver over existing pavement. Retaining walls, there's no money there for next year. What we're looking to do is, that next line is the pavement and retaining wall assessment. We're looking to do a citywide assessment of all of our existing roads, you know, pavement condition, the last one was done about 10 years ago, so this will tell us which roads are in good shape, which roads aren't. Same thing with retaining walls. And then there's just a few smaller construction projects that you can see listed down below that.
Thanks, Ann. That next category that you see is facilities and energy. One of the things that we've done over the years, all these facility maintenance costs and infrastructure build-outs used to be within each individual department. We've changed that out, it's now under one category. This is where we can look at a much larger plan, a master plan of our facilities. When should we be replacing boilers? What's the scheduled replacement on some of the HVAC systems as we've done studies and we get feedback on? What's the life expectancy of some of our equipment? Even Auburn Hall now is hitting 20 years old, and so, which went fast. But you know, if you take a look at this, this plan, you're gonna see items within Auburn Hall within here. Already talked about the fire stations. So there's some items in here under the fire stations that if the new facility is done, some of these improvements won't be, they will move forward, and so they're on future years. I guess while I'm talking about future years, another change that we've done is, in the past, if you looked at the CIP plan, you know, year one used to hover around 16 million or so in the plan. Year two might be around 10 million. Year three, four, and five, you'd be lucky if you had $6 million planned out in each of those out years. What we've really focused on is building out those future years, getting a good handle, even if it's a placeholder, so that we can start doing some planning on our end, anticipating projects that are coming forward. Those are some of the things that we've done, planning for the new high school, as we've looked at retiring debt within the city, the new public safety building, same thing, we have debt that's coming off, how do we plan for that in the future? So now if you take a look across, you're gonna see there are, you know, we build out those future years, so we have a good handle on what's coming. The next out of facilities is the Auburn Public Library. So we manage the maintenance, and for the library, something that we've really taken over the last probably three years of just working, working that. We have, we have the staff that has the experience and the knowledge to be able to really work that, so we've included the library into our future building plans. You'll see under finance, you're gonna see revale. So the revaluation is an anticipated cost, we will need to move forward with doing a full citywide revaluation. That's obviously something that I'm sure your department will have conversations about, and as developments come in and others look to build, that certainly has, has an impact. We've been working with the City Assessors Office, we've been having conversations with the state. Many communities are faced with the same task moving forward, and we're planning that out now. And so, so that work is underway as we start thinking about what that will do and how will we cover the cost for that revale. I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on vehicle apparatuses and things, but if you have questions for that, I'll certainly answer it. You know, when we look at some of our, just, just so you know, as many of you know from, you know, your own experiences, environments that you work in, you know, if we were to agree to replace a fire engine today, the delivery on that is probably close to three years out. And so that has really shifted our planning, so you're seeing in here an engine replacement for this year, but we're anticipating it to be in three years. So we're working through, what does that look like? How do we allocate money? Obviously don't want to bond money for three years and pay interest on money, that, we're not gonna see that product or even pay, or pay for it three years out, but we also can't commit money. And so, so you know, the council has certain authorities that they can do, so we're working that through now and try to determine what that looks like. Same thing with our transit buses, we're on a 24 to probably 30-month return when we order a bus, how long it takes to come in. And Public Works has been struggling with the same thing regarding plow trucks and everything, where most of our equipment were, were heavy equipment, we're looking at at least 24 months on return on that. We've been doing a great deal with information and technology. There's not a lot in this CIP for that initiative, other than probably rolling out more fiber as we continue to expand parks and what we provide at those parks. Most of the time, once we do an upgrade at a park, then it also includes, you know, security and camera system and Wi-Fi and all those things, well, that requires fiber, and so we're, we have a plan that we've been working through on rolling out fiber to those locations, and this just continues that plan over the next five years, not looking to do it all in year one. And the same thing with the security camera project. It seems like every, every facility, every park, every green space, there's an expectation that we would have one, and what does that look like, and how do we, how do we roll that out? You'll see in here, we have joint initiatives. One of those joint initiatives is with the City of Lewiston for the 911 Center. The 911 Center will need to make a move when the public safety building takes place, whether or not they stay in that building. The board has been, the 911 Board, which is a collaborative board with the City of Lewiston, has been looking at a location over in Lewiston as well. That'll take cost to move, move a 911 center, and what does, what does that entail? So there's a placeholder here for that. Not a lot within the Norway Savings Bank arena, we've, through a fund balance initiative by the council, we are looking to improve the Rank 2 at Norway, which is a gravel base, and so we'll, we'll change that out to a cement base, which will help for our future activities, events that'll take place there, by being able to quickly remove the ice and allow non-ice events take place. Planning and permitting, you'll see that's a, that's a standard request from planning and permitting regarding dangerous buildings and comp plan implementation. One thing that is different in this year regarding comp plan program is to actually, one of the goals that the council will probably be looking at, and they still gotta approve their goals and identify those a little more clear at a future meeting, but actually doing a full comp plan review. And so, so that could be an initiative that they're going to take up. If it is, we have this in the CIP plan for, for that work, and a lot of that is contracted service for those who have been part of that process in the past. Probably the last thing, just to highlight, again, like I said before, we're collapsing things that were in different departments budgets, CIP budgets, so now we have a city fleet vehicle pool, knowing when our vehicles should be replaced, it's all done at Public Works now rather than by departments. They, they track all the preventative maintenance, all the warranties, they know when vehicles need to be replaced, rather than each department that may not have, you know, that specialty. And so the fleet team at Public Works is able to do that. So a lot of vehicles in the proposal, and then again, a new section that we have is the recreation open space maintenance. So that's looking at areas that, again, may have been under wreck in the past, but it's really, our recreation department is, is set up for more programming. So Public Works is really the area that focuses on that maintenance, new fields, all those things. And, and the last thing I would just mention is just the, we know that our walks, our trails in our parks, lights need to be replaced. Sometimes we build these and then there's no anticipation of, there's no budget in there for any maintenance on those, so you'll see now, we work in budget replacement for the lighting system at our parks to make sure our parks are safe and enjoyable for people to come, and they'll feel, feel safe if they come into the parks, especially in the evening. And so that has been budgeted and planned out. I think the last thing that I would just mention that we are doing is, one thing that has always been done in the past is that the capital improvement plan just goes out to bond, so whatever's approved goes to bond. What you will see in this budget, and then also hopefully moving forward, is an actual operating capital line item within the budget. There are things that we bond that we shouldn't bond, that are, we're paying interest on over multiple years, that may not be an item that really should meet that threshold of when you bond something. And so as a cost-saving measure, we're looking at, especially some of our vehicle replacements, rather than bonding that, we'll continue to add that to an operating capital line item within the budget. Save funding that will be bonding, so we're not paying interest on that for multiple years out, so. So Dan and I are ready. We also have Derek, who's our facilities and energy director that's in the building, as well as Scott Holland, who's our Public Works Director there here, and can you answer any questions of anything you might have?
Any questions? Okay, seeing none, I will go on to the next agenda item. Thank you very much, I appreciate it, it was really interesting. Alright, so the next agenda item are the minutes, so do I have any amendments to the minutes, and if none, then I will seek a motion to approve.
So moved?
Do you have a second?
Second.
Alright, all those in favor? Okay, excellent, motion carries. Alrighty. Okay, the next item on the agenda is a public hearing extension site plan amendment for our Hexagon solar plan. And so just as a reminder, this has come before us before, right? And so all this is, is this is an extension, and you know, I'm talking with staff, it seems to be kind of commonplace, getting these solar farms up and running are taking, it's taking a little bit longer, so to that, and they have asked for an extension, so I'll let staff kind of speak to that, but this is not, just as, just as we all know, this isn't a new program for us. Correct?
Correct, yes. So this is really common. We've seen, as the folks on the board can remember, a few solar projects, even just this year, that have requested extensions. And this project is technically coming back before, before us as a site plan review because there's a provision in our ordinance that says applicants can request a single one-year extension, which they did in 2022 after their original 2021 approval for what was originally a four-megawatt project. It was reduced in 2022 to 1.99 megawatts, and due to holdups with, with the connection agreements, they have had some further delays and are now requesting an extension for, for two years until 2026. However, they do expect to have their system operational by 2025. The new proposal is, it's a reduced version of the original, and it's now proposed to be 0.99 megawatts. The new proposal also eliminates all wetland impacts and, and reduces the, and increases setbacks from, from the road, from the property lines. So it is, it is a change that staff could normally approve on our own, but we are here because of our ordinance requirements. So on another note, Planning Board may consider at some point, as we've spoken about, extending, extending the approvals for folks who are initially coming before the board, because we are coming to anticipate delays like this one. So we recommend that, that Planning Board vote to extend this project for another two years and to approve the changes. We also have the applicants here in case you have any questions.
Sure, so any questions for staff before we bring up the applicant?
Quick question Catherine, so historically, we've done one-year extensions. Are we actually allowed to do a number greater than one?
I, maybe Eric can speak to that.
Yeah, I think that the ordinance says one year with a one-year extension possible. I don't think it's out of the question to, we know that they will likely be back here in 12 months to ask for the one-year extension, as they may be starting the project right around that time. So I think you could approve the one-year extension at the same time as the approval. We also think that it's worthwhile in clearing that up for, taking a look at all types of projects, but solar projects in particular, everyone you approve, we know they're coming back for an extension, because it always takes longer than that time period. But I think you could approve the two years by basically approving the amended, smaller scale of the project tonight and approving a one-year extension.
Perfect. Any other questions before I bring up the applicant? Okay, seeing none, if the applicant wants to come forward?
Hi, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Katie Merrick with Hexagon Energy. I'm here today representing Auburn Solar. We also have my colleague Scott Reamer, who originally represented the project in 2021. First off, I just want to give a huge shout out to Catherine, she's been incredibly helpful throughout this entire process, but happy to answer any questions you guys may have.
Excellent. Any questions for the applicant? Okay, seeing none, I'll move over to public comment. Let's seek a motion to open up public comment.
So moved?
All those in favor?
Second.
Excellent. Would anyone from the public like to come forward and talk about an extension of a solar project? Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment. All those in favor? Alright, do you have a second?
Second.
I'll just give her a second, okay. Close. Alrighty, so the next item on the agenda is gonna be a fun one, right? So this is...
Point of order, do we have to, we have to make a motion on this one, don't we?
Oh yes, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, sorry, sorry. It's been a really long day. Alright, go ahead. I was just so excited to get to the next one.
So we're having, we're having discussion about this one?
Yeah, let's do it, yeah.
I think it's, I think it's a good idea, however, I don't know that, so should it be two different motions, approving this reduced site plan, and then a second motion to do, to approve the extension? Approving this reduced site plan and then a second, uh, motion to do, to approve the extension? Or should it be all included in one motion?
I think you could do it either way, um, as long as it's clear that both of those are part of your, your approval.
Thank you.
So I'll go ahead then and make a motion to approve the Hexagon Energy Site Plan and Special Exception Amendment and Extension to the original Planning Board approval until March 2026, located parcel IDs 325-030326-001 and 326-001-001. The approval is for the site plan amendment, reducing the size of the project from four megawatts to 0.99 megawatts, with the findings that the proposal meets the provisions of Chapter 60, Article 16, Division 2 Site Plan Review and Division 3 Special Exception Review.
All right, do you have a second?
Second.
All right, do you have any discussion of the motion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor? Okay, motion carries. Now we get to the fun part. And I, and I will start, um, by, um, having, you know, opening up, right? So, um, at this point in time, we are going to review an ask by the city council that we delay the effective date and the applicability date of the ordinance that I know that all of us have worked really, really hard on over the years. Um, I know that we worked hard on this with, um, lots of public comment, lots of discussion, um, lots of tabling it sometimes and bringing it back to city council because we wanted and needed additional questions. Um, to that end, you know, we worked really hard, I feel like, to bring this over the finish line, right? We, we had millions of questions, we pushed hard on the data, we pushed hard on the science, and we got to a, a point as a board that we were in approval of changing this piece of ag zone to general business. Um, and if you will remember, um, you know, Eric and staff, they were very clear that, you know, why general business, right? Like, why did we choose this vote zone versus, um, other ones? And it was because it was in line with the complement, the comp plan. And so at this point in time, correct me if I'm wrong, I'll definitely lean on staff for this. Um, I, what I am reading from the staff report from the city council is that they want to delay the effective date and applicability date because they want to allow time for residents and property owners to become familiar with the zone. I've never seen that in all of my years of, um, a zone change, and we did a fair amount. So I, I'm questioning that kind of like nebulous ambiguity of this zone. And then my other thing too is, and this is going to be the drum I'm going to beat in 2024, we are not a political body, right? So we had a zone in front of us. We were trying to make the best practice recommendation in this zone to care for the watershed, to care for the lake, to care for the pit. Um, and then, you know, obviously to protect Lake Auburn. And that is why we chose the zone that we did upon recommendation of not just staff, but also collectively as a board, right? Um, so when I read in the staff report that, um, you know, there's fine common ground between a developer, I don't ever want to be held into a position of changing zoning to accommodate a developer, right? We had an initiative in front of us. We worked really hard on that initiative to allow to protect Lake Auburn because of the pit, right? Because of what is happening in that area. And then if we changed it to development, we had more control to allow the control to happen around that Lake Auburn. So I, I'm just going to let you know now that I am not in favor of this. Um, my recommendation is that we table and postpone, um, to a date certain, potentially April. And we ask city council to bring to us what has changed from a science watershed zone comp plan? What has changed from December to February that we now need to take this information in and apply it to our original suggestion? I don't have any new information to change where I feel like we had arrived at. So I'm just kind of laying the foundation on that and I'll, I'll hand it over to staff.
I, I think you've covered, um, essentially what's in the staff report. Nope, that's fine. Thank you. So, yeah, the council asked us to, um, through a first reading at the council, um, asked us to bring this to you for a recommendation. We're here to get that recommendation. We have talked with the, um, sort of majority property owner that had been considering a development on a majority of that land. Uh, we do think that there is compromise to be found between, um, the concerns that the council's heard from members of the public around some of the commercial potential uses that are allowed in the general business. Um, and the needs of the, uh, property owner to make the developments that they were considering happen. We do think that there is potential compromise there that could address both, both sides of that. Um, I hear what you're saying, it is consistent with the comp plan, um, the way that you had made a decision in, I think, November and then the council in December.
Thank you, yeah.
But, uh, we're here to bring this to you for a recommendation.
So I guess my question is what changed from December to February apart from a new city council and a new mayor? So what changed in terms of information around this parcel of land?
So, um, what my understanding is, is that there is some concern on behalf of the council of some of the uses that are allowed in general business?
Okay, so that's good to know. So when we table this, or hopefully we do, then I want to know what those concerns are.
Right.
Right? So I want to postpone this, I want to know, so that we, we can as a board collectively research what those concerns are, right? Because I don't know what they are. Like, I'm not going to be like, oh, yeah, let's, let's postpone it.
Um, does it, doesn't necessarily have to be something that changed for the city council to have initiated this?
I'm, I'm sorry, didn't understand you.
Is there any requirement for something to have changed? I think the city council could have just initiated this motion even if nothing had changed.
Still not following, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, I, I think I understand rightly. The, my understanding is that the city council can ask our thoughts and recommendations at any time.
So nothing needs to have changed for them to like ask for us to do, to review it, you know what I mean?
No, but for me to want to look at it, I'm, I'm, our, my take on this, or any ask, is to understand the science, the code, the whatever it is, since we're not a political body, to say what has changed between now and then that would make me need to go back and review something that we already did. So one of my questions certainly, and I'll wait until we're ready to have questions, but, um, let me just pause.
Okay, so any questions for staff?
I guess one of my questions is anything going forward with the land as is with general business? Isn't most of it special permit anyways?
It is, yes. So, um, there are a number, so first of all, any residential development, right now, three and, uh, three units and over requires, um, planning board review. Any building over 5,000 square feet in general business requires planning board review. Um, there are some uses like vehicle filling stations, um, automobile, uh, retail, like things like that, that I think came up as a concern. But things do require those.
And those would need special?
Those would need special exception review, yes.
And those would have to be approved by the board at that time?
Yes, yeah.
I, I, I want to mention something that, uh, hasn't been mentioned yet, um, that I think is pretty important. The, the applied date for July, you know, July 1, um, of this year, the zoning's, uh, not being proposed to change, right? So I think it's a matter of having an opportunity to do some good planning here to look at what, what are the needs of the developer? And how is the city going to move forward so everybody's comfortable as we protect the watershed? You guys have done an outstanding job of that. Um, it's commended. Um, this is just another opportunity to, to bridge that three-month gap. I think it's important that, um, we take the time to, to look at this and to create a plan. I, I think it was important that the council was real clear that they weren't necessarily going to change the zoning. Um, it's not, it's not in any of the language that we're, that we're looking at right now in front of us. None of the language here has changed that the zoning's going to change. But we're just postponing the date of the applied, of it being applied, what you guys voted on. I think that's important. There's, there's nothing in here that's going to change that. So I think it's just a matter of identifying, and it has been mentioned about some of those uses that could potentially impact, um, the watershed if it was in the watershed, right? So if it's adjacent to the lake. And some of those uses could be, um, a gas station or something like that that could really be impactful if it could, you know, got, got into the groundwater and, you know, potentially impacted the lake eventually. That affects a lot of people that are in these two communities.
Yeah, so let me ask you a question about that. We spent a really long time reviewing all of that. And we were advised in, in the information that we received that this was the best zone, right? And am I hearing you now say that potentially we were misguided and the uses that we approved are not?
Um, so that, you know, it's, sometimes we're trying to, you know, use the military term. You know, we're trying to fit a, a round peg in a square hole. It's not necessarily always perfect. And now we're trying to shave the edges to make it fit. And that's where we're at right now. So that's, that's the challenge of the board. And that's really where we want to engage the board into some real, um, constructive, um, you know, conversation about how we can move this project forward. We don't, we all can agree in the room that we don't want to, we don't want to, you know, we don't want to sandpit forever in a day. Um, that's not good. It's not good for our community. And we want to try to find a way to move forward.
So can councils just make changes to the zone in that area without delaying it?
So there's, it, they could make, they could make changes, but they, they really are looking for a recommendation from planning board. I mean, the, the proper way to do this is to go through the planning board and make recommendations to the council. So we use all the tools that we have for the science and for the planning, all those types of tools that we have in place, so we can make our best recommendation to council. Council could go a different direction, but it doesn't necessarily mean that they're going to get all the votes if we don't get a favorable recommendation from the board.
I mean, I guess I'll open it up to the board and I do have a, sorry, Dave, I do have a question. Um, I, for me, and maybe others are seeing it differently, I, I don't feel comfortable with the favorable recommendation when I don't know what their concerns are. Do you know what I'm saying? I don't, like, now I'm hearing you say gas station. Okay, well, so what else is out there that you're trying to care for? I, I feel like we would be remiss as a board if we didn't actually have the, a list of concerns that we're trying to solve for. I, I don't know what they are. I, do you guys know?
No, I, I don't. And I guess I would, I would go back to the fact that for many, many meetings, we asked and solicited that information. We have the, the, if there was anything new, certainly that's what we've asked for. But I would think that we would have thought of what could go in general business when we had that conversation and that when we reviewed that information and decided that that was the best case. So I would ask with regard to allowing time for people to digest it, did we follow proper timelines with regard to notifications and public comment when this came up previously?
We did. There was a first reading, um, uh, at the council that directed us to come here for a public hearing. We've done the proper notifications.
And I'm more referring to when, when, when we made the decision back in November, were, were all of the timelines that we're, we're responsible for following followed?
Yes, yep. Public notices were proper. Um, there were multiple as we went through that process and.
And we had opportunities for public comment multiple times during that course of our review, correct?
I know, my email to, I was asking Catherine, I, it was so late and I'm so sorry. Um, but I was going to ask her how many times we had public comment on this, yeah, I was curious.
Well, not just that, but how many times we had two separate rooms of people here with public comment. You know, we, we had, we had annexed. And, you know, people were here and we had lines and, and lines of people talking and talking. And I, I'm looking at the proposal and I'm reading in one of our highlighted paragraphs, uh, one of the last sentences, "For the owners to become familiar with the zoning law amendment and for city council to further study and determine whether any additional amendments to this chapter related thereto are necessary or desirable." I'm of the same school. I think that I hear my fellow board members were, oh my gosh, we've hashed this thing to death. What's, what now? What's new? What's changed? And I, I think there's been ample opportunity over many, many meetings and many public discussions and many forums for whatever minutia that isn't even described to us to be handled. And I, I'm not comfortable with this as well.
Tim, I agree because for me, the only thing that I see that has changed is a desire for the council to ask us to postpone so that they can look at it again. Um, and being not an extension of council, um, I don't see that as an appropriate, um, effort for us to make a recommendation. Certainly there are, there are processes in place for both staff, for public, for this, for, for us and for council to bring forth a request and a change to an amendment, to something if we desire to in the future. So certainly to me, if there are thoughts that, that come forward, uh, over the course of time that say, hey, maybe we want to look at this differently, then we have the avenue with which we can propose those. I don't see a need to delay something that's already in effect because it's already in effect, correct?
It is, yes.
So now we'd be starting something and then stopping it to then start it back up again based on a desire by the city council to have more time to think about it. And I just don't, I don't agree.
One thing that I will add just for, um, because this is a question that staff had, was what would happen if this were to be, um, if the date were to be delayed? And it stays, and what we were advised of is that it would stay general business. Um, but the uses that aren't also allowed in ag for the time being would not be permitted. So it stays ag, there is no zone change happening, but the, the effects of the change don't go into effect until later. So that was a question that we had, so I just wanted to share that in case that's a question that you would have as well.
Sure, and just kind of as a point of order, and I, I think I was maybe kind of reading into some of your language, Dave. So incorrect me if I'm wrong, but our options at this point in time, we could, and again, I, I might be like putting the cart before the horse because we still haven't gotten to public hearing or any of that. But, um, you know, right, we could make a favorable motion that we, you know, agree with city council um, to delay the applicability, applicability date. We could make a motion, a not favorable motion, right, with findings on why. Or, you know, we could also maybe middle of the line, table postpone, um, our recommendation and ask city council to tell us, um, what additional amendments, um, that they want to review related to this chapter that are necessarily, so I, like, I don't know what they're trying to look for. So I, I, I don't feel like I, I don't feel like I could do a favorable or not favorable because I, I don't know what they're trying to look at.
If I could, um, I see here in the packet that the, the suggested motion is a favorable one. So beyond the reasons staff has given so far, are there more reasons why the staff is recommending a favorable recommendation?
Well, I, after talking to the council, um, and this is a council-initiated change to delay the applicability date, um, we do see that we could work with the city council, um, and the applicant and probably find some common ground, uh, during that timeframe. We don't think that the project would see a direct delay from that in that timeframe. And we would hope that, um, if there were changes, that those could be back to planning board and then back to council by around that July date, so.
Yeah, so I see what you're saying about changes. We don't know what those changes are, right? So I think as a, as a collective board, I, I personally want to know what changes they're looking at so that I can understand and digest that as we move forward as partners, right? So. So I, 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 I can't read minds. I don't know what their changes are. So, I mean, can they show, can they tell us that?
Well, I guess, can Eric, can you clarify in the ordinance? We, we're supposed to provide once, if we're given a recommend, if we're asked for a recommendation to provide common feedback on our answer, I believe within 30 days. Um, do we have the ability to say we are postponing to a date certain as our answer versus unfavorable, favorable?
Hey, you do have the ability to ask for additional information, um, before you're ready to make a decision. I will say that, um, based on discussions with the council, what I suspect we would end up doing is, um, limiting some of the commercial uses, like we've talked about, gas stations, larger big box retail, automotive. I think those would be included in the changes, but we don't know exactly what they would be.
Don't those need to be approved by special exception though? Isn't that what I heard earlier?
They do. Yeah.
So, so something like that came before us, this, the city could recommend that we do not approve it as part of a special exception?
That, that's accurate. Okay.
So I, kind of going off of this question too. Um, if we made a recommendation, positive or negative, could we also make a finding that we'd like to have a joint workshop with the council to discuss this? Because it seems like a lot of this is stemming from just not knowing.
Yeah, I feel like we already did that, right? We had a joint workshop in years past, in the past. Didn't we have it with the prior council?
We, we have, yeah. And I suspect we'll do it again. It's a, it's somewhat routine every year or two to do that, to make sure we're on the same.
Yeah, again, so I'm just going back to we are not a political body, right? And we worked through this. We had a joint workshop with the prior mayor and the prior council. We worked through all of this. And now that we have a new political body in place, the council and the mayor, they're wanting to, I feel like resurrect the work that we've already done. Um, we had a joint workshop with the prior council over this. I, I don't know which, again, I'm not sure what's changed.
I don't think we had a joint workshop with the council on this specific thing. You were talking about a, an annual joint council.
I thought we had it on this.
Yeah, we did have a workshop with the council on this and the larger Lake Auburn watershed.
I thought we did, yeah.
Ordinances last year. Um, I think we did an update in January. I think that meeting was mid-year, but I'd have to check for the exact date.
All right. Um, okay. I guess at this point in time, I think we've had some discussion, but I guess I'll open it up. I'll seek a motion, uh, to open up public comment.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Excellent. All those in favor? Okay, public comment is open. So, uh, come forward to the podium, state your name. You have five minutes. Um, and, uh, welcome your comments.
I'm Stephen Beal, 575 Johnson Road. Uh, there is some specific factual basis for this request from the council, I believe. Uh, and it relates to the particular geography and composition of this parcel. Uh, the area, uh, in question was comprised of parts of several different parcels. Uh, and the unique features of it are that of the area that was rezoned and everyone agrees that this is now outside the watershed. But of the area to be rezoned, that has been rezoned, only perhaps 15 or 20% of it, Mr. Goddard, oh, can correct me if I'm wrong, is on a plane with Grace Lawn Road, is on the sitting level of Grace Lawn Road. The great majority of this area is substantially below the level of the road. In some cases, as much as 75 feet or more below the level of the road. There are some other parts of these areas, uh, these individual parcels that have been regraded and compacted and are approximately 50 feet below the level of the road. In this area that was rezoned, contrary, uh, with all due respect to Catherine, uh, the majority of the uses that are permitted in general business are more than there are permitted by special exception. There are 32 categories of uses that are permitted within the general business zone. Some of these include, and I didn't bring my complete list tonight, uh, warehouses, clubs, bars, funeral homes, and a wide variety of general business uses. And in addition to that, there are the 23 additional categories, not individual uses, but categories of uses that are permitted by special exception only. So because of the composition of the parcel, the varying gradients of it, the topography, the composition of the soils, and the wide variety of uses that are either permitted or may be headed by special, had by special exception, I think that that was the basis for the council's saying perhaps we ought to consider some refinements of our rezoning of this area as flat out general business. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Anyone else like to come forward? All right, seeing none, I'll seek a motion to close public comment.
So moved.
All right, all those in favor? Excellent. Oh, can I have a second? Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Perfect. Thank you Riley. My right hand man, my left hand man. Um, okay. Any further discussion? Comments, questions?
Uh, I'll, I'll say that I, I would be in favor of this because the things that it sounds like staff and potentially the, uh, property owner would work through would be eliminating things, obvious things like the gas. Like we shouldn't, I know we'll come back before special review, but I don't think we should spend our time specially reviewing obvious things like don't put a gas station near the lake. So I think, uh, it'd be my opinion, I think just give it an extra time to potentially remove things like that from the zone would be a good idea. And actually, that's what I was, that was my point when we had this discussion a couple of months ago.
So I actually have a follow-up question then. So if we start to say, well, not this, not that, not this, not that, it's no longer than in the general business zone. So how do we actually address, would we have to create a new zone specific for this area? With those things carved out of it?
I think there's a few different ways to look at that. I think either it would stay in general business and we know that the potential development of the site will require some support from the city in order to make it happen and, and make something beyond, um, the existing gravel processing, mining operation. Um, to make that go away and to make the necessary traffic and stormwater improvements, uh, new roadway construction. The city would have to support that through tax increment financing or in some other way, either grants, um, or funding. So it could be addressed as part of a trade-off in a development agreement for those other infrastructure improvements, um, that need to be built. Um, the other, um, idea that we've talked a little bit about, um, with the property owner is, um, could we go to the multifamily suburban zone, which is the same density standard? Um, I think the shortcoming of that is he would really like the ability to have a community center type building, uh, maybe a recreational facility, nothing specific, but similar to what you might expect in a YMCA or, um, indoor, uh, Aquatics pool or something like that. And right now in the residential zone, we can't do that under the planned unit development standards because it's a maximum building size of 3,000 square feet. And as soon as you look at either ice or, uh, pool, you're well, well over that size.
And again, I don't want to set a precedence that we're changing zones for a developer. I want to be cautious of that, right?
Yeah, I was going to ask whether or not, I mean, we're, we don't set zones based on what a developer wants. I mean, we, we dealt, we, we looked at that over in New Auburn. There was a request there, you know, and, you know, that's, that's just not how we're supposed to operate. So I guess I.
I mean, I can appreciate a concern from a developer and I, I would definitely want to hear a concern. Um, we have public comment, right? So if, if a developer wanted to come and, and share their concern, I would, you know, I would hear it. But I, it was my understanding, maybe I missed the mark, that, um, we were trying to protect by Auburn. And in doing that, we wanted to change the zone to allow control around that area, right? Um, to get it out of, you know, the pit environment and control that area around the watershed. That, that was my, that's what I thought we were doing. So it wasn't so that someone, you know what I mean? Like.
Yeah, I, I heard that too. And because I know that, and, you know, certainly what I heard from staff was by, by choosing that zone, the city would have the most control of working with the, the developer and just having, understanding stormwater concerns runoff and that all of those things can be worked and factored in as a development, uh, is created. And I haven't heard that anything has changed. The land hasn't changed. There's no new science that has come forward saying it's not running this way, it's running that way. And, you know, I'm, I'm in favor of an unfavorable recommendation. I think I, if, if someone says, hey, let's delay to a point certain to ask for specifics, um, then, then, then I could do that too. But my initial reaction is an unfavorable text amendment because I just don't see the need to make these changes. There's an avenue for which the city to work that area. They have control. That was what it was asked of us originally. So I don't see the need to change.
Um, I just want to bring up two things. So I know that there was mention about having a, uh, meeting with city council. Upon having the training with Sally recently, um, we as a planning board are not a legislative body, city council is. And I think meeting the two of us kind of makes things a little bit messy. Um, and then the second thing is a couple of questions that I wrote down just to kind of remind myself of going forward in the process. And it was, does the application meet standard and are procedures and submissions in order? And from what I'm hearing from city staff, all of those were and still are in order, correct?
Yeah, I, I would say for this process and the previous one, yes. We've done the proper notices and held the proper public hearings and we're at a public hearing tonight.
So this also sets a, a message to other investors as well that, um, we're kind of wishy-washy or flip-floppy on zoning. And when you make changes to something, and, and it all, it impacts a lot more than just that place. Because if a lot of that residential stuff happens, there's going to be other businesses nearby that are going to pop up. So they're counting on this consistency as well in what we're doing. So I, I really, I, I would need a good reason to recommend this beyond, we don't like it or something like that.
No, it's not that we don't like it. It's, um, they want, they want time.
Or something. It's the, because we've done the, the, the due diligence on this.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I agree. Paul brings up a very valid point about the message it sends to the general public, the message it sends to the people that came and spoke, committed time, uh, committed energy, thought to the whole process that's been going on for so long and the message it gives to potential developers and the message it gives to our citizens in general that decisions are gray areas. And I don't want to set that precedent.
Yeah, and it can change with new political governing bodies. Yeah.
So I just have a few clarifying points and then also some questions. Um, my first one's on the special exception. So under the current zoning, if someone wanted to put a gas station here, let's say, um, as long as they follow the ordinance and we, we have to give a positive finding of facts. Is that correct? Like, we can't just say this is by the lake. We don't like it. No. I mean, that, it's more of a question.
Yeah, I suppose you could say, um, you need to make a finding that it's, um, that it doesn't cause detriment to the city, to the environment, to safety. If you found that one of those didn't comply, then you could deny it. But you would need to, if, if the development did meet all of those standards, then you, then it would be, then if you were to pass a denial, I would say the developer would have grounds to challenge that. Um, but yeah, everything else, like 5,000 square feet and over are subject to that.
And my, my biggest concern with that is, you know, if, if it meets all the criteria, special exception, it, special exception doesn't mean we can just say no to anything, um, whether it's permitted.
We don't say yes to everything either.
Yeah, and that's, and as long as they, what I'm saying is as long as they follow all the parameters of the ordinance, you know, so if an engineer signs off that I believe this is safe, we can't make the finding that it's not safe because an engineer has stamped it essentially, unless we can challenge that somehow. So I, I'm just saying that because I am in favor of trying to mess with the ordinance a little bit to put these parameters in place. Um, I'm really in favor of a joint discussion. I know we've had a joint workshop on this before and as long as we publicly notify it and have that discussion, I think that'll bring a lot of clarity, um, to, to both the council and us. Um, so I don't mind whether a recommendation is made for positive or negative. I just really want to give feedback, um, and then also ask for a joint discussion, um, when the motion is made. But that, that would be my general sense of this.
Okay, and I'm just going to say I'm not in favor of a joint discussion. It's, it's unfortunate that the new political people, uh, were not in, uh, you know, in place when this was made. That's too bad. Um, you know, potentially maybe they can make change going down the road. Um, but, um, maybe they should have gone for counsel earlier, maybe, so.
And you say we, we did have plenty of public comment with which people could come forward to, to.
And we had a joint workshop, so. All right, so at this point, oh, do you have a question?
No, I just, I almost said, I know it's a pretty good point of the, at that legal training. They said that even if it's something that we know we disagree with, if they checked all the boxes, we don't have any right to vote against it. So saying just because something comes before us as a special exemption, we could obviously get nixed is not actually true.
True, true. But we'd also be relying on, on people who are trained in whatever it was that we would be asking for, uh, from an engineering perspective or whatever. And if, if the, we could certainly ask for a second opinion. Um, if we think that it's, we're not, you know, we disagree. But at the end of the day, for me, I'm not going to second guess an, you know, multiple engineers who may come forward to say, yep, we feel it's safe. Well, if it's safe and it's allowed, then, you know, I.
Riley, and if you remember too, um, him and Lambert came before us for a special exception and we did not approve it, right?
I don't know that if we, if we went over the reasons we didn't approve it, that, that would have been sufficient to what we learned at the end of last month under our legal review. Like that might.
Okay. I feel like we've all been pretty opinionated. I guess I would, um, see if anyone wants to make a motion.
I make a motion to postpone agenda item six to a date certain, thinking April. Asking for detailed reasons for the request of delay.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, do you have any discussion of the motion?
I, I'm not in disagreement. I guess I, I don't know whether or not there's anything that would come forward specifically. Um, and that if, now, now does that become if we wait until April and then something comes forward? Is it, are we still looking at June? I mean, July 1st, is it now September 1st? Is it now whatever? Um, and, you know, is that just continuing to kick the can? Um, I don't know. I'd, I'd be more interested in an unfavorable, but I would.
How far can this get moved down the calendar?
I, I would just be reasonable in the amount of time that you want to allow for new information. I mean, we could certainly do the March meeting and still make public notice, um, or the April meeting. Uh, just ask for clarification that it's the regularly scheduled meeting or some other date. Um, that would be either, um, April 9th or.
March 12th, I think.
March 12th.
So Tim, that's to postpone the, uh, recommendation, right?
Correct. So, uh, with, yeah, so to revise, I would say to po- postpone to a date certain of March 12th to allow for public notice and to be within the guidelines for the request.
Wait, so we had a motion on the table. Um, it was seconded. We had a discussion of the motion. So are you changing your motion?
I was adjusting the date certain.
The date certain.
Just adjust it to March 12th.
I'd like to make a motion to amend that to April 9th.
Um, do I have a second for the amendment to the motion?
I, I don't think the first amendment got a second or died. So I think we have to either.
It did get seconded. Did it get seconded?
No, I mean, the amendment, uh.
It was seconded and then we had a discussion.
Tim's amendment to his own.
And Tim changed his word. Tim changed it to the.
Did you make an amendment to the motion?
Tim changed it to date certain.
I am, I clarified and by amendment, I originally said to a date certain of April and I amended to a date certain of March 12th.
Okay, so we have an amendment to his motion. Do I have a second?
To Tim's changing of his.
Tim made a motion and he said for April. And then we had a second and then there was a discussion and then he then asked for another date. And then, so he then didn't officially say he was making amendment to the motion, but he did then, um.
So we're looking for a second on that amendment.
Second. Yeah, you know, I'm going to pause real quick and, um, I'm going to just do kind of an executive order at this point in time. You didn't officially amend your motion, so we're going to stick with your original motion. We had a second, um, we had discussion and then Dave made and asked for an amendment to the motion. So that's where we're going to go with Dave's at this point in time. And Dave's amendment to the motion was till April 9th, correct?
Correct.
Okay, do you have a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
All right, do you have a discussion for April 9th? I personally like April 9th, so I, I'm going to be in favor of it. All right, no other discussion, um, all those in favor, um, I'm sorry?
Yes, I, I do have some discussion items on this.
On the April 9th date?
Yeah, yeah, on this motion.
On the April 9th date is what we're talking about right now.
Yes, yeah, that's correct. I'm going to talk about that. Um, my concern is with April, um, is the fact that by the time we vote on it that day, it won't get to the council um, until either late April or May with notification. Um, and then we have two months to turn around, um, if we do go the way of making adjustments. And that has to go through us with public hearings and then two rounds with the council. So we're to July anyways. Um, so I don't see the point, um, in, in that date.
I leveraged April 9th to provide additional feed timeline and feedback for those people as part of council or whomever else they need to engage. People are busy and felt that that was, that two months was, was adequate time. I think one month is, is too short. Um, and I think that, that expecting that to be turned that quickly is not, not realistic.
I agree. Any other discussion on the April 9th amendment to the original motion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor? Okay, all right, all those opposed? Okay, motion carries. So now we're back to the original motion, um, which was to postpone to, it's now a date certain of April 9th. Um, and asking for city council, um, I'll paraphrase, so we have it for the record, what you had said. I'm not going to muddle this any further. Um, basically, uh, detailed outline of exactly what their concerns are with this zone that they would like planning board to review and consider when we're talking about delaying the applicability date. So that's kind of paraphrasing what the motion was. Um, I do not have, uh, steel trap memories, so I'm sorry, I couldn't paraphrase it back to all the same. Um, with a second to it, um, so now we're back to it. Any other discussion to the original motion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, so the next item on the agenda is a little lighter. Uh, it's a text amendment, Zone Board of Appeals, so there's no public comment. Um, and I will just hand it over to staff for discussion.
This is really, um, just a administrative, um, item that, uh, really separates the review boards and, and just gives it a sole, um, board, uh, for the appeals. Um, but specifically, uh, with that, by just, you know, standing up the, um, sole appeals board for the planning board, we're suggesting some language, um, in the section 60 dash 1130, uh, to give it a little bit more flexibility up to seven members and then striking out no more than three consecutive three-year terms. So what that means, if, if, uh, if someone has an interest in being on this board, it's, it's not hurt a lot and really it just gives them an, uh, you know, an avenue to, um, stay on the board. And then, um, so a majority of the quorum, uh, is another text change. And really we're just, again, if, if we can only get three or four members, then, you know, um, as long as we're in the plus on the numbers, then we could ha- hold a hearing for the, for the appeal. So, um, just allows a little bit more flexibility and, um, we're hoping we get, um, some, some folks from the public to step up to be part of this board. We're, we're heavily recruiting as we speak, so, um, we, we haven't had an active, uh, appeals board, uh, for some time. And, uh, you know, to kind of take a step back, um, this, this board was kind of lumped in with assessing and, and their appeals process, um, and then ours, our system. Um, so there was a lot there. It was very thick for information, so we're now focusing on just, just the, uh, the planning piece and the, you know, our ordinance under chapter 60.
Yeah, makes perfect sense to me. Any questions for staff?
Yeah, I actually didn't think of it till you just said four. Uh, is a majority of appointed enough appropriate phrasing if they're saying there is four members? What would happen in that case?
So as long as, you know, as long as three people showed up, um, then, then we'd be go, we'd be good for a meeting.
All right, I was thinking two and a half.
All right, so, I mean, this is just a text amendment, so we have a motion in front of us. Um, we have questions for staff, if anyone has any, I think makes reasonable sense. Okay, at this point in time, I'll seek a motion from somebody.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to forward a favorable recommendation to city council to amend chapter 60, article 15, section 60 dash 1130 dash 31, section 60 dash 1135, with proposed edits in Turin, state the zoning board of appeals as standalone board.
A second?
No, just to ask before you act that we have the, the public hearing as well, so. But it's not a problem that they've heard the motion.
Okay.
Let's have a public hearing.
Wait, what, Eric, what are you saying?
We, we should have a public hearing before the, a motion is made.
Um, it's not on the agenda. You said text amendment, Zone Board of Appeals, there's no, um, public hearing noted.
Sorry, that's our fault. Uh, we do need to hold a public hearing on this amendment.
Okay, so you need, you need public comment on this?
Yes, we do. Public hearing, and it's been advertised as that.
Oh, okay, Paul, okay.
I apologize that it's not written that way on the staff report.
Okay.
So I'll move to open public comment.
Second.
All right. All those in favor? All right, excellent. All right, open up to public comment. Five minutes. Okay, seeing none, I'll seek a motion to close public comment.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Excellent, perfect.
Eric, would you like me to restate my motion? Or are we good? Okay, we're good.
I think we're good. We have it, it was public record of you reading the motion.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. All right, so we have a second. Do we have any discussion of this very simple motion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor? Excellent, motion carries, excellent. All right, I don't have to open it up. I will open it up. Any public comment? All right, seeing no one coming? All right, excellent. All right, so the next item is chairperson vote. So as you all know, I am the chair and, uh, Paul is our co-chair. Um, so I guess I'll open it up.
I would actually like to nominate Stacy for chair and Paul for co-chair, uh, again. Or do we need to take them? We should probably take them one at a time, so I would like.
Yeah, let's do that.
So I would, I would like to nominate Stacy for chair.
Okay. Second. Is it like a form of motion?
So, yeah, it's open to nominations. Um, the way that it works within the policies and procedures and ordinance, if there's only one nomination, the board can go to a vote. If there's more than one nomination, then there should be a ballot cast, so we can.
Does anyone else like to nominate anyone else on the board? Okay, seeing none, I guess, public vote on myself. All those in favor? Thank you. Um, all right, and the next, uh, item, you want to make the motion on, you, as you're.
Sure, I'd like to make a motion for co-chair for Paul.
Okay, anyone else want to make a motion for another co-chair? Okay, seeing none, let's vote on Paul. Yay, Paul, you're popular. You got it. All right, so the next item on the agenda is ad hoc committee vote. So vote on two planning board members to join an ad hoc committee to review the city of Auburn's ordinance for consistency with Maine state law LD 2003. So that is going to be very interesting, by the way.
Yeah, and so this actually, um, we, uh, this chair asked us to clarify this. It can be just an appointment from the chair, if you'd like.
Okay, I'm going to do that, actually. I'm going to execute, execute on that. I'm going to make the appointments, um, for the LD 2003, uh, committee. Now, um, that, I'm going to pause and I will, I will announce that. Um, what I also will announce, right, from the SNRB representative vote, um, that's the same thing, correct? Yeah, and so I'm appointing Paul Jakes to the SNRB, uh, to be a representative there. There you go. All right, the next item on the agenda is a workshop, so review LD 2003 rulemaking and interactions with the Auburn zoning ordinances.
Wait, so who are you putting on the ad hoc committee?
I'm sorry?
Who are you putting on the ad hoc committee for the LD 2003?
I'm going to, she clarified for me that I can do it. I'm going to take it back and review and then I'll let.
Should we do it during the agenda item?
What do you mean?
I remember we're just going through agenda items and it seemed like you jumped over that one, so I didn't know if you.
Which one?
Assigning, that's the ad hoc, the ad hoc assignment.
Uh, Catherine just shared with us that that is something that, um, I can appoint, uh, two people to it.
Oh, you're not doing it right now?
No, 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 no. If you, are you interested? Okay, great. I mean, so that's rather what I was going to do. I, I, you know, I think it's, you know, I haven't had a chance to query the group and see who has some interest in it. And I think it would be unfair for me to appoint people if, one, they don't have the time or the interest. And if someone does have the time and interest, then I want to know that, right? Cause I want, so that's, that's, I think it would be unfair and unjust for me to do this at that point in time.
Yeah, I just didn't know if you, I thought you were saying you're doing it later, because that's what I was, my question was.
Yeah, no, no, perfect. Nope, and I'm glad. And, and again, if anyone does have some real passion around that, just reach out to me and let me know, so, for sure. Great, and the next agenda item is a workshop.
Yes, um, so, from beginning, okay. So, um, yeah, so this is a workshop where we, as we know, LD 2003 is, um, it's actually currently underway right now. According to, there are a few LDs that have applied here. This is the bottom text is cut off a little bit, but LD 2003, just as a summary for folks, um, is, is a public law that passed that requires that, um, for, for municipalities with comprehensive plans, that they allow up to four units per lot in the growth zone of the, of the city. And that for affordable housing units, um, that they allow 2.5 times the density of the market rate units as allowed in the underlying zone. Um, also it'll, it allows for, um, lots with an existing dwelling unit to have two additional dwelling units or rather up to two additional dwelling units. Um, it also requires that in the non-growth zone, that lots with an existing unit allow for up to two more. Um, there was another amendment, where there was another LD that passed that exempts, um, parts of the, um, the Lake Auburn watershed, so all of the Lake Auburn watershed in the city of Auburn from this rule. There is another LD that extended the, um, the applicability date from July 1st or sorry, from, or until rather January 1st, which has already happened. So we are past the time that we should be working on this. And it's important because we've had folks come and ask us for guidance on how they might be able to, um, develop their property with LD 2003 in mind. And while we are mandated to follow these rules, our ordinance hasn't caught up with it yet. So for this workshop, I just want to discuss in public what LD 2003 does and does not apply to, so we can think about how we might want to address our ordinance changes. So, um, four units are not permitted outside the growth zone or in, in, or the industrial zone or in the ag zone. So what the LD says is that up to four units must be allowed where housing is allowed in the growth zone. So, um, all of these areas do not, are not in that category, so that, so that would not be allowed there. Um, no additional units would be allowed in the Lake Auburn watershed. So that LD was added to protect the lake. And because Auburn already allows for accessory dwelling units, the LD really does not change much in terms of adding an additional unit to a lot that already has a house. So Auburn already does this, the LD would not, uh, would not strongly affect that provision. So we've also heard about, about a how, a density bonus for affordable housing units. Um, and affordable housing is kind of a, it's a term that is a little bit, um, a little bit rocky. Different, different, um, entities define it in different ways. The way that the state defines it is for, um, rental housing, um, a development in which, uh, that the income does not exceed 80% of the median income for the area. Um, wait, I'm sorry. A development in which a household whose income does not exceed 80% of the median income for the area can afford most of the units that the developer designates as affordable without spending more than 30% of the household's monthly income. And for owned housing, that number changes to 120% from 80%. So that's how the state defines that. And for those two, more than, it has to be at least 51% of the units in any given building need to meet those requirements for it to be considered an affordable housing development. So density bonuses do not apply in all areas of the city. It does apply in the growth zone. Um, and I'll have a map that I'll pull up to show folks what that looks like. Um, they are applied where multifamily housing is allowed, which is, which will have to be everywhere in the growth zone, essentially. And where public water and sewer are available. So part of this is before the certificate of occupancy is issued for affordable dwelling units. Um, the developer needs to be able to show that public sewer and water is available. So that will expand in the city over time, but does not even hit everywhere in the growth zone at this moment. So again, like a lot of the other provisions of LD 2003, the density bonus does not apply in limited and no growth zones. So think, um, most of the areas to the north and south of the city, where the ag zone is, et cetera. Um, in the industrial district, district, in the Lake Auburn watershed and also in any of the form-based code zoning districts because the provision says that we need to allow, um, a, a density bonus of two and a half times the, the maximum underlying density of the zone. But because form-based code doesn't have a density maximum, there would be no, um, there would be no density to multiply. So that would remain unchanged in that aspect. So one, so what we did for this workshop is just start to think of a few questions that we don't have answers to, that we need help from, from the planning board as part of the ad hoc committee to, um, to answer. So we need to change some provisions of, some provisions of the ordinance. And one of them will be to allow for four units in single-family and two-family only zoning districts because the LD does require that we do this. So zones that, that apply to would be urban residential, suburban residential, low-density country residential, um, rural residential. And I don't think, and then obviously agriculture, but that will be mostly exempt from the. And I don't think, and then obviously agriculture, but that will be mostly exempt from the LD, to my understanding. So, my hope is that, as I go through, you can think about some questions, some more questions that you'll have regarding issues like this and bring up any more issues you have, any more questions that we can address. Another question that we will need to answer is whether we want to, how much land we want to require as more houses are added to a single lot. So, the LD does, does require that we can, does say that we cannot require more land per subsequent dwellings that we do, that we would for the first dwelling. So, what we are allowed to do is, um, is require, say, if you have one unit, you can require 10,000 square feet, which means for two units, you may require 20,000 square feet. And for three, 30,000 square feet, et cetera. But we could also say that we, we can, um, keep the land area smaller for various units, so we, we can discuss how the city wants to approach that. We can be, we can be, um, less restrictive, but not more restrictive than LD 2003. So, um, the city does have some freedom to decide how we want to build around this.
That, that'll be an important decision point on why you ultimately draft, because right now, we have some zones, urban residential is a good example, where, um, the first unit is 10,000. Um, in order to have two units, you have to have a total of 12,000. So it's not an exact doubling each time, but there's a logical, um, expanded size that isn't, isn't double the size of the first unit.
I guess that, uh, the, um, the ADU is already allowed, so, you know, for the one to two, that, that square footage doesn't necessarily have to increase today, as we speak. Um, that would be a change, that could be a more restrictive change in a lot of cases, going, uh, for an example that we're showing here. But that's just kind of, that highlights, um, what's allowed today, so, um. Yeah, so the, you know, if we're looking at, uh, urban residential, even today, the second unit, an ADU, could, could be on a lot that's, the existing lot, as long as it meets the setback requirements, doesn't necessarily have to meet the density requirements. So that, that's a consideration, um, that, that the board will have to decide.
And this is, and it's the same thing, actually, for road frontage. We could require that, for example, the num, the road frontage increases at the same rate from the original dwelling as the subsequent dwellings. Um, this, both would have impacts on the way that the city develops, how spread out houses are. If we want to develop, if we want to develop closer to our growth area, I do think the second option here, to keep the road frontage as is, with increasing units, would be in line with our, would be in line with our, um, planned growth area. But these are decisions that we can make together as a board. So, same concept as the increasing law area, but for road frontage, we'll need to consider.
That, that second one would be in line with how our ordinance has worked for a long period of time. We've never required more, well, we may have required more lot size for more units, we've never required more frontage for more units, so.
I think that the second option here, too, um, is consistent with the comprehensive plans, um, avoidance of sprawl. I think this top option might, might encourage that type of land development more. But again, that's something that we can discuss. Another, another thing that we may want to consider, the LD 2000, LD 2003 states that for a lot in the growth zone, or sorry, yeah, for a lot in the growth zone with an existing house, um, two additional dwellings may be built on it, up to two additional dwellings. Um, it can either be one attached to the house, one detached from the house, or one of each. At the same time, it says that in the growth zone on vacant lots, four dwellings must be allowed, up to four dwellings, or at least four dwellings, rather. Um, and one thing that we may want to consider is, do we want to keep, keep it this way? Do we want to treat lots with an existing house differently than lots, than vacant lots, by allowing three on the existing house lot and four on the vacant lot? Or, for example, maybe want to allow four lots on both in the growth zone and say, three lots on both vacant and existing in the non-growth zone? Or are there nuances that we want to consider? Um, that's something that stood out to staff as, um, as an interesting provision that we may want to look at. Um, we, again, we can be more restricted, or sorry, we can be less restrictive, but we can be more restrictive in this sense. So, another question is, we have, there's a, there's something before, the state's considering removing subdivision, subdivision review for, um, three to four-unit buildings and dwellings. So I guess, one thing that the board could consider is, if we want to remove that review, um, or the board review for those kinds of small subdivisions, three to four units, and allow for staff to review them at that level. Um, because the LD does allow for four, three, and four unit buildings. Or, do we want to continue to have that in your purview and review those small subdivisions? So those are some questions that we can review, but those are just a few that we thought of. Um, in the staff report, we drafted just, um, a model ordinance to show how we may start to address some of these topics, but it's just a model. Um, we can, we can do something different. But this is a good time to just gather questions, thoughts, have an open discussion.
I'll go. Um, well, just on that last one, what do you guys think of removing that subdivision review on those three to four-unit ones?
I, I think it's a lot of paperwork and a lot of expense for somebody to put together a full site plan subdivision application for, um, you know, three units or four units. Probably 10,000 or more. And if we wanted to promote that within our growth zone, um, we could simplify that permitting process, especially if this LD passes, to make it simpler for up to those four units. And there, there's talk about affordable developments, potentially up to 18 units, being, uh, no longer classified as a subdivision. But I, the one that seems to have some legs is that three to four-unit allowance.
I have a couple of questions. One's clarifying, one is, uh, specific. The clarifying question, um, LD 2003, the language does not say you must make these happen. The language says you must give the property owner the ability to do these things. Is that what I understand to be correct?
Correct, yeah. You must allow for those within the ordinance.
Thank you. And my specific question, um, going back to definitions, talking about the 80% of median income and 120 median income. I'm curious, is the median income, what is that, what is that region? Is it by the neighborhood, by the city, by the region, by the county? 80% median of what?
The city, yeah.
Do we know what those numbers are?
Um, are you curious enough to volunteer, to be on the ad hoc?
No.
We, we can get those. I don't know them off the top of my head.
You'll have two people.
Well, I'm, I'm just asking, because I'm, I'm trying to get in my head, there, there's so much here to-
I can somewhat answer the question. It's, uh, for a single person, it's somewhere in the 50, $54,000 range. That number changes as you add, uh, folks into your home. Um, you know, if you have four children, that number will be higher than 54,000, so, or lower, rather. So the, it, it's a sliding scale, but there is numbers that this census provides us, um, with that. The, this map here, I think, is, for me, it's the most telling. Um, if we, you know, if we scroll out a little bit, it's, we're really talking about the growth area. Um, and then we eliminate, you know, from that other LD, we eliminate all the watershed to the, to the north. Um, and then if we eliminate all the industrial zone, um, the green area that we're showing, um, we eliminate that. And then if we consider, um, the form-based code, which is kind of the, the, the purple area, um, or magenta, I don't know, help me with that color pink, I don't know. Um, it, we're really not, we're not talking about, it, it was more, uh, reactive for us as we talked about this new LD coming down from the state, that it was going to be really assertive on the city. And, and as you start breaking it down, it's, it's not, it's not so bad. And then we think about the GB zone and the multifamily zone, um, not depicted on this map, but it, based on our height restrictions, and we're not allowed, we're not required to increase the height. At 17 units per acre, uh, for multifamily, in both the GB and the multifamily, that it's really difficult to, to really exceed that. I think we're, we're almost at a maximum number. So really, we're starting to look at just the UR and the suburban residential. Um, some of the, some, there is some rural resin here, but there's, there's not a lot. Um, it, it's not as impactful as what I originally had thought, so, uh, from city, from a city perspective, so. I just want to add that to the conversation.
John, in that map, what's the, the area sort of by the, the middle of the turnpike in the, in the south side, which is showing its growth, but not applicable? Why is that not applicable?
That's, that's the industrial zone. That's industrial. There is, there is a section to the south of the highway, I believe, is, is some ag zone there, so.
Okay, I'm just trying, I'm just trying to figure out what roads those are, because that, to me, is like more farmland on either side, but not-
Yeah, there's some industrial uses along Hackett Road, but it does, it was looked at as an expansion. Um, and then to the south of the turnpike, um, is ag zone, but also doesn't allow housing. Without being connected to one of the uses that is allowed.
Okay. And this map is now, Catherine, you said this map is now available in GIS?
Yeah, so I want to make it available to make sure it's publicly, I don't know if it's publicly accessible yet. Um, uh, the GIS coordinator made this map today based on, or we got this map earlier today based on the, um, the LD 2003 guidance. So, what, what she did was, she took the growth zone, um, which is everything in the green, and then remove, or everything in the green and the blue and the purple combined. And then she removed the ag zone and the industrial zone, which leaves us with the blue area, which is the area where LD 2003, um, applies in the growth zone and the 2.5 multiplier for, um, for low income, or for affordable housing developments, rather, would apply. Um, LD 2003 also applies in form-based code, which is all in the magenta, but that is where the 2.5 multiplier would not apply, based on the way that our ordinance is written.
So, and then just to clarify, if it doesn't have sewer and water, right? So anything that we have, you can see the lines there. So if it's sewer and water, it's kind of greenish looking. If it's just blue, that's existing water. We have a lot of areas that don't have sewer and water. Um, and so those, we couldn't apply the, um, 2.5 density there in those locations. And another important factor is that we also have subsurface wastewater law that's going to dictate those lots, regardless of what the zoning is and how many units we got to go there. We've got to still, um, meet the requirements on the chap, chapter 241 for 20,000 square feet per, you know, per unit, um, on that, so.
Is it per lot or per unit? I think it's per lot, right? Per parcel? We can clarify that.
We could clarify that, but, but there is, there is a requirement on that. So, just, just to be aware of that, that there's other provisions that this LD doesn't, um, doesn't trump, so.
So will we end up having for those zones that some where it applies and some where it doesn't apply? Are we, in essence, splitting a zone in two? When we look at those that are in the growth zone, we're going to have a, a different set of ordinances than the, the, those that are not in? So, we're, it sounded like there was some rural residential, there's some different areas where it does apply versus where it doesn't apply? Or how would we approach that?
Yeah, some of those zones will have land area within the growth zone and area, land area outside the growth zone, so. That is something to think about as we, as we craft the ordinances. So we're going to have, I think, this second growth zone overlay that we have to look at to advise somebody on what can be done on that parcel. Um, and over time, I think we could start to adjust our zoning boundaries to line up with that better.
Yeah, there could be a reference, I think Eric tried it already with our, with our counsel on some, uh, our legal counsel, I should say, on some general language. But as amended per LD 2003, and maybe we add as amended in each of those zones? I don't know what, um, we tried to simplify it in a way, but we didn't, we didn't get necessarily a, a positive recommendation on that. But that's maybe an approach, we use some language that references these LDs as amended, as the state amends them, so. Because I think that this may be amended, you know, I, I don't, you know, no state law is already always stagnant. So, I think we, we want to add, those in the ad hoc committee, we want to add some language that gives that flexibility of how the state, if the state makes a change, we pivot with them.
I think we're going to be chasing these changes for the next few years, I suspect.
I have a question about the not applicable section. Um, so you're saying the form-based code, essentially the density multiplier does not apply to that zone. Um, I had a question about parking requirement, because there's also the affordable housing parking requirement. Um, that still applies to form-based, right?
It does, yeah. So, um, that's something that we will need to consider. So, right now, to, so currently in form-based code, um, we need to have, I believe it's, four parking spots for every three units, dwelling units. Um, this LD says that we can't have, we can't require more than two parking spots, or sorry, more than one parking spot for every two units. And you, it's three, and Paul, were you saying that it's three parking spots?
I thought it was two for three.
Yeah, I think you might be right. Okay, yeah, you're right, you're right.
I guess my point was just like the not applicable, so that's more about the density multiplier than the parking. Okay, I just want to make sure I understood that.
Yeah, good question. Yeah, parking, still, we will need to work that into our ordinance, for sure.
And I think we also need to make sure it's clear how we treat, uh, lot size and setbacks. Um, especially, well, setbacks and, uh, road frontage. I think it's somewhat illogical to require four times the minimum road frontage for a four-unit, but it is something that is allowable, if that's what the community wants.
I, I know Auburn has a lot of, uh, long, narrow lots. Um, I'm sure had something to do with road frontage in the past, um, which makes the back part of the lot unusable with the road frontage requirement. So that's definitely something to look into.
Yep.
Let the landowners be creative.
Yep. And at least in form-based code currently, we do encourage, and in some cases, require shared driveways. Um, and for accessory dwelling units, we require a shared driveway if it's on the same parcel. So, all of those things can be built in.
Yeah, and I think that's a, that's an important piece to bring up, that, um, I don't know if this is found under chapter 60 or not, but there's requirement to go into a public, if we get into multi-units, you know, if we're getting to three or four units, um, does that constitute a public road at that point? And that's- And that's, I think that's something that I think should be discussed. I don't know the, the exact language of that and where it's found, but I think that that's something that we probably need to be aware of as we approve this and make recommendations, thinking about how does that impact our road standards? And there's no, it's interesting in Auburn where there's no differentiation between a public road and a private road. So, so that, that's an interesting part of the conversation.
I think some communities allow a lesser constructed shared accessway. They frontage right-of-way, a lot of people call it, but that may be something we want to consider. I think anything more than three separate single-family homes, three or more single-family homes would still require that it be a named road. So I think we're going to start to see a lot more of these little blue private drive signs, but we'll need to address that as John said in the road standards.
The, you know, my experience, you know, being on the other side as a consultant for many years is, you know, we've always heard that towns or cities are not interested in, in, in creating, you know, new roads and new infrastructure. And I was really, I really found it helpful that the city didn't differentiate because they were thinking about the future, you know? If they did adopt those roads in the future, at least they knew it was built to the city's standard. So it's, it's an interesting conversation for sure, and it's, it's something that we're going to have to, we'll have to deal with.
A follow-up question on the parking that Ryan mentioned. So it sounds like ours current standard is different than what LD 2003 is. Does that mean that we have to loosen ours? Or do we have an opportunity to say, hey, you know, parking is an issue, we've got plowing, we've got all these different areas, we don't really have spots for people to go, you know, if we've got snow, you know, events coming, that type of thing. I could see it becoming a real mess. But, but are we told that we have to loosen it to match?
For, at least for affordable housing developments. So that, that's what the parking requirement will apply to. So for those instances, we do need to relax the standards so we can put something into the ordinance that specifies that, or if we want to do it another way, we could do that too.
What, what's interesting though, too, outside of the form-based code that doesn't prescribe a maximum density, if you have a parcel that could accommodate 10 units under our existing zoning, you can do an affordable development and you can build 25 units. Only half of those have to be affordable. So if you do an affordable development, you're getting 12 market rate units instead of 10, plus you're getting 13 affordable units out of that land. So it's a, it's a huge incentive to do an affordable development in zones that have that maximum.
And with the two and a half times multiplier, according to our math, you'd only need one or two additional parking spots for those additional 15 units. Because we require four for every three right now. And if this requires two for every three, you know, they don't have to do that much more parking for those additional 15, so.
And I think that standard applies to all of the units in a development that meets that affordability criteria. So it's not just the affordable units, it's suddenly 25 units instead of 10 at a lesser parking standard.
The other, the other piece is that, and Eric helped me with this, you typically know it off the top of your head, but isn't there, there's a reduction in the parking requirement already in our ordinance? If it's for, you know, older, you know, basically older, older folks, there's a half a parking spot per?
Yeah, slightly less than what LD 2003 will mandate.
All right, good discussion. Any, any other questions for staff?
Or anything that you want us to look into, dig into ahead of our LD 2003 ad hoc committee meetings?
And we're, we're ready to meet when you make the appointments and get started.
Sounds good. And if you guys think of anything, just shoot, obviously shoot staff an email if you guys think of something after, so. All right, next agenda item, Ms. Selenius.
Next month, we will need to, we're going to review some of our planning board policies and procedures. Our legal counsel made a few recommendations for us to make a few changes. So I think to go over that in public and to update our procedures officially with the board will be something that will be on the agenda for the coming month. And we, I didn't receive any new applications for this next month. I'm trying to think if anyone else has thoughts.
Yeah, hopefully we'll be working on LD 2003 and have some more questions or updates to, to present.
That would be great.
I know when we went through that, hey, what have we not gotten back to list?
Oh, yes, the comp plan, yeah.
The comp plan, Andrew's Drive, Andrew's Drive was another one. You know, where, where are we on, on those? If we've got something, if we've got a light, should we work on, working those in?
We, we do, and we haven't had a chance to get in front of the council, but what we as staff were suggesting is, let's get that list on paper. And I think we took feedback, we got a lot of those down. I think we need to share that with you one more time. And maybe let's get some feedback from the council to make sure we're not picking one that doesn't look like it has any interest in making it through the finish line. Though we could prioritize those with the council, rather than spending a lot of time on some that they may not be interested in.
And something else too, is we had discussed doing kind of a report card of sorts to talk about where the city is on our comp plan goals. So we have started to work on that, and where we are now is we're, we're planning on circulating it to, circulating our comp plan achievements through the other departments so they can add in what their accomplishments have been. So we're just waiting to get some feedback and then we're going to deliver that back. So that's also on our, on our plate.
Neat, that sounds interesting.
And I know Phil mentioned this in the CIP presentation, but we made sure that there is enough in the capital, the comprehensive plan implementation acquisition line item that the council over their term would be able to implement some of the ideas that are in the existing plan, or go out to RFP to draft a new plan. As our, our consistency finding expires this year, it's hard to believe that it's been that long and that plan is nearing the end of its life. But it did not reset when we did the amendments the way that we hoped it did with the state. So we are due for a new plan here over the next year or two. And we think there's some interest on the council in starting that process that takes 18 months to two years.
Okay. All right, at this moment, I would seek a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Wonderful, have a good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.